I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good afternoon. We have any persons wishing to address the board, Vicki? Nope, thank you. Can I get approval of the minutes of April 4th, 2018, please?
I'm going to move to revise the presiding officer from Kent Elberti to Kate Parker on those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to revise the minutes of April 4th. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those are revised. Now can I get an approval of the revised minutes of April 4th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. I didn't see any conflicts of interest. No. So moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, on to the reports of the president.
President Parker, members of the board, it is my pleasure and really a joy, given how much time I've spent on this, to present the FY19 budget for Southeast Tech. Just kind of a high level, I'll run through the executive summary that you were all provided with and kind of speak from the margins. Hits a very high level, then I've got a PowerPoint that might dive into a little more detail, and then if we need to go a little deeper, we'll do a third verse and look at the actual details of it. So, a couple salient points as we look at our FY19 budgets. It's a balanced budget that we're bringing forward. Proposed revenues will match our requested expenses for FY19. I'm primarily speaking to the post-secondary fund, we'll get into the enterprise funds in a little bit. Again, no planned use of the reserves. When you look at the next section as we go through the executive summary, there's kind of a paragraph in there that can be confusing on credits. I think the salient point to that is, is credits are going up. So that's a positive thing, and you'll see that in the graphic when we get into the PowerPoint. So when we look and project our credits for FY19, what I'm really doing is taking a fairly conservative approach. I look back at FY18 credits, where I think we're going to end up for the year, which again is still an unknown, but by this time of year, we've got a pretty good estimate of where we're going to be by June 30th. And then I look at any program expansions or any additions that we know are going above and beyond our current operations. So we have a couple areas there. We added an additional LPN instructor as part of this budget. That'll allow us to take more students, increase enrollment in that program. And then we're also offering an RN program up in Huron as a remote delivery, so that adds some additional credits in FTE as well as we, student FTE, as we adopt this budget. So, very conservative, at least in my estimation, of this approach. As I said, it's a pleasure to actually be talking about credits going up instead of what I've been before you the last several years, trying to figure out how we're going to fit our existing expenditure stream into our revenues. It does, budget does include a couple fee increases. One is the $2 tuition increase, that's set by the State Board of Technical, State Board of Technical Education, that was done in March of this year. So they're increasing tuition by $2 a credit, so that's going from $114 to $116 a credit. Then in this budget, we're also proposing a local fee increase of $3 per credit. And that'll increase our local fees from $80 to $83. Overall, the $5 credit, per credit increase, that represents about a 2.1% increase over our aggregate rate. So, from $235 a credit up to $240 a credit. Little bit of history.
And I think it's in the email, do we know what that compares to the surrounding other technical schools and the University Center for Credit Val?
Yeah, we're higher.
Okay.
We're higher than the other techs. Couple reasons to that. We are lower than the University Center. They have different structured rates. I'll speak first to the University Center. They have their 100 and 200 level courses, the way they publish it, and that's right at $275 a credit. So, that's as of today's rate, that's not what's proposed for FY19. So we are a little bit, quite a bit lower than those. When you look at the other technical institutes, I think as I alluded in the email, we're not all real transparent on our fee structures. We are probably more so than most of the other techs. Western Dakota is fairly easy to compare to. Right now, at $235 at our current rate, Western Dakota's at $230. So we're $5 a credit above those folks. When you look at Lake Area, when I go out and look at their semester cost sheet, it is all over the board, but aggregate, you're kind of seeing in that 200 to 205 per credit range. So we're, you know, $30, $35 higher than. Mitchell, very similar to that as well, seeing in that $205 range. When you look at those cost sheets, a lot of us put the totals out there, what does it cost to attend this program? That sometimes is influenced by the number of credits, what's involved in the curriculum. But I tried to break it down as succinctly as I could. Part of that comes into, and you'll hear me talk about this, and we've heard this before, HB 1182 really comes into play in this. We're receiving, and you know the history behind it, that's salary enhancement for our instructors, and we're receiving 3% of the total appropriation of that $3 million. So, by comparison, you think about Lake Area, who is the largest recipient of it, is receiving in that neighborhood of $1.3 million. So if you take that differential of that $1.2 million that they're receiving from state that we don't receive, take your time looking at our 60,000 credits, that's almost a $20 credit differential. So, our HB 1182 or our instructor salary enhancement, and I'm not just laying this on instructors, this is our overall operations, have really been placed on what we charge at a local level. So, that's part of why there's a differential in there. I think part of it comes into Sioux Falls is probably a little more expensive place to do business. I mean, you see it in the metropolitan areas. When you look at Sioux Falls, you look at Rapid City, we're very close. Get into those smaller communities, maybe a little bit less to operate, but needless to say, that's a long answer to.
No, it's very informative, so thank you for doing that.
Sure. My pleasure. When we look over at other fees that we charge, and all the schools do this, us probably to a lesser extent, having program-related fees, we're not proposing any changes to that. We implemented some last year in about five or six programs in LPN, RN, welding, plumbing, HVAC, and law enforcement. We had some per semester, per student types of fees. Just one slight change, it's revenue neutral, but in the LPN and RN programs, what we're doing is we're moving to a credit base rather than a semester base. It solves certain problems for us in how students are classified. We had students coming in, taking some preparatory work, really weren't in the LPN program fully, but they were getting hit with that fee. So, we're moving it into a credit basis based on LPN course prefix, nursing course prefix, so they're very specific to their programs. The other areas, the per semester, per student still works, they don't do a lot of preparatory, they're right into the program. So we'll continue to operate down that path. You look at FTE count, employee FTE count, the numbers are the same, 164 in the post-secondary fund in FY18, 164 that we're proposing in FY19. Some changes in there, there's some adjustments. I mentioned the new LPN instructor, there'll be a new RN instructor for the Huron program as well. We had a couple retiring instructors that we elected not to fill at this time. One was in the landscape design program, another was in the business administration program. Didn't leave those folks hanging. We increased the adjunct budgets in those areas to provide additional resources. So it's really trying to right-size our staff based on what we're anticipating our enrollments are going to be. There's some other adjustments in there, if you were to look at that summary sheet, you see by category, this is still a carryover, the way we classify and the way we account for employee groups. There's some reductions in clerical. Most of the other things are just movements, they're movements within groups. So, we had three clerical positions that were moving into an employment contract position. It fits and aligns better with the type of work that they're doing. Some adjustments in the employment contract going down. So the net effect is re-increase in employment contract and really can be tied to two clerical and one specialist that are moving into that category. There was addition of a couple administrators, which kind of always becomes a topic of discussion. One was a requirement by the nursing board, state nursing board, to have a program supervisor, program administrator. So, we moved a person who had been assuming those duties and associated the title with that, and they have full authority over the LPN and RN programs. The other one is reflective, and you've heard some of these reports on the staymates, reporting, talking about moving to an enrollment management concept. So we are transitioning and shifting to that concept, establishing a vice president of enrollment management. So that's creating an administrative position as well, moving that person from a deployment contract into an administrative position. There is one piece that will probably come back later when we're looking at our, one of the revenue streams, I'm kind of jumping a little bit around here, but on the maintenance and repair, there's some additional state funding that's come, it's not programmed at this time. We're still kind of working through what the final dollars are. That'll be finalized, I think, this week at the State Board of Technical Ed, there's been a proposal on the table. We don't have that program right now. It's about $78,000 that we're anticipating and what they're projecting to get with that. When we come back with the final adoption in July, we'll have that program. There's a couple things, there's a project out in 2020 that we can either pull in. If you noticed in the capital plan, we've got an engineering study to start converting our exterior lighting, both the wall packs and our pedestrian to an LED. Depending upon what that engineering study, that might be an option too, to start that transition into an LED type of light. We've got some poles and things that are getting close to failure. So, when you're coming down into the revenue, you see the tuition and fee increase in those revenue categories, it's primarily, as I stated, two things. Increases in tuition and then increase in the tuition rate. The fees and the tuition move hand in hand, so they're all credit-based. We look at our state revenue increase, a couple things related to that. There's a 1% increase in the per student allocation that was adopted in legislature, not a huge dollar amount, placed to $34 per student. Our distribution formula is a little bit different, though. It's based on enrollment in specific programs and it's enrollment in FY18. So as we look at our state aid for next year, while the size of the pie is growing, we're anticipating that we are going to get a bigger piece of that pie. Our enrollments in FY18 grew at a greater rate than the other technical institutes. So, when the budget was developed, as all the techs sat together and we go before the Department of Education and before the appropriations and all of those types of things that happened in that state process, we all have to estimate our credits for FY18. So, that was the basis for it. Our credits are even going to come in a little bit higher now, so we expect to get a bigger piece of the pie. Another single big piece of the state increase is related to a half a million dollars in a governor's office of economic development grant that's coming forward. That's a contingent award, and it is associated with the Vet Tech expansion. So what we're looking to build out and renovate, they add wood to provide for that new program. The state came in, looked at it as a partnership, we knew we couldn't do it ourselves. Representative Mickelson was very helpful in securing some of that funding, but it was contingent on us raising a half a million dollars on a local level, and then Southeast will be putting in some of its R and M money to complete that project. So, right now it's contingent on the fundraising, we're in the middle of that capital campaign. Hopefully we'll have some news to report out with the final adoption, but the expenditures in there, as is the revenues in there, but it's all contingent. So if we don't get the revenue, we won't incur the expenditure, so. But hopefully we can clarify that as we get in further. On the local level, you see a $518,000 increase, again, that's that half a million dollar match at a local level. Otherwise, our local level revenue, and our federal revenue is fairly consistent with what it was last year, not a lot of changes in there. Going down on the expenditure side of things, when you take a look at it, there's a 2.01% COLA, cost of living adjustments, and 2.01 seems kind of an odd percentage, but there's a, accountants have a reason for everything. And it really comes back to the inflationary factor, last year was 30 basis points, this year we're using the same index that's used to establish the per student allocation, and I won't say it right, but it's urban wage earners, and there's a whole bunch of other things with it. But 1.7 on top of 30 basis points equates to 2.01. So we're trying to make up for some inflation in FY18, we didn't increase salaries, we froze everybody, and so we're trying to bring that up to at least inflationary adjustments in Benefits, a little bit of an increase in there, and part of that is the premium rates related to the health and dental, but also in the calculation methodology. We had a few positions turn over this year as people are resigning, and I go to do the budget estimate, I always look at the maximum impact. So what's the highest cost benefit? So I always assume whatever that replacement employee is coming in at family coverage. So that's part of why you see a little bit of that increase, and we may, as we go throughout the year, and actually place folks, realize a little bit of favorable variance in that particular line item. Little bit of an increase in adjunct, as I spoke of earlier, with those positions going away. Professional services is another broad category that's up $250,000, that's directly tied to two things. One is the $100,000 in there for architectural and engineering fees, for, again, that Vet Tech program. At this point, we haven't incurred anything, I'm really trying to wait until we know we've got some type of pledge commitment or we've got some commitment before we go forward. Unnecessarily having to have the money in the bank, we've got enough that we can cover that, but we need to know those resources are coming, otherwise we've got quite a bit exposure if we don't wait. The other piece of it is, there's $150,000 in there, and again, this flows from that staymate report. Talks about redesign of our webpage, and I've probably heard President Briggs in some different meetings talked about. We gained enrollment last year through some efficiencies, but, and you've heard Russ Krueger talk about the funnel, and what we've done is, what the webpage is intended to do is increase that top of the funnel. So when we looked at last year to this year, relatively small increase in that funnel. So, part of the webpage design, and I don't know if you want to speak more to the webpage, but I think I'll just keep going through the budget piece of it, but that's the purpose of it, is to draw people. Staymates has come back and said that our web content right now is hurting us in terms of our marketability, so we've got that $150,000 to go in there and redesign that. Repair and maintenance, $109,000 increase in that category, really is related to some maintenance and service contracts on some pretty expensive pieces of equipment, simulators. This makes sure we keep them up and running and they're maintained properly, so we've taken out those extended service contracts. Classroom supplies, an increase, or increase in supplies overall of $212,000, majority of that's in classroom or other supplies, which are going directly back into instructional areas and instructional programs. $159,000 increase in non-capitalized equipment, that's those pieces that have multiple-year lives, but ranging costs from $1,000 to $5,000. The majority of that $159,000, again, is back in academic programs. Non-capital equipment was one of those areas we really shrunk as we were seeking decline in enrollment, so this is part of the way to work our way back up into the funding streams that we had in prior years. There's $130,000 in some miscellaneous categories, majority of that's tied to some operating subsidies to a couple of our enterprise funds, the food service fund and the childcare fund. They are not self-sustaining at this point, so we're going to kick some dollars from the post-secondary fund over, and we see them as part of our campus and part of our service offering, so we need to do that. I'll be back before you in June, we've done some survey and got some more information on the food service that I'll share with you as we transfer some funds as it relates to FY18 and what we're doing in FY19. Capital improvements, the bulk of what's in the capital improvements, obviously that's a year-to-year type of adjustment, it's either repair and maintenance that we typically have every year, asphalt repairs, concrete repairs, things that just go wrong in the building is part of that. The majority of the actual infrastructure is related to that renovation. We work with Jeff Kreider pretty closely in looking at his five-year lifecycle plan, and we just happen to be right at a point where we don't have a lot going on right now. Few years when you get out as a building, tech center becomes 20 years old, here in a few years, we'll start to see where we want to start planning for. We've already talked about parking lot replacements, we'll be getting into that chiller life, which is that 20 to 25-year life range, so we'll be just at the beginning of it in 2021. Hailstorm took care of a roof problem for us for a while, so all new roofs in the facility, so we're set with that major component. So, not a lot in that lifecycle plan as we go forward. And then the final piece is in capital equipment. We're increasing capital equipment, most of that's being funded with federal dollars, with Perkins grant. We had a couple employees in there that will no longer be eligible for that grant funding, so they step outside of it and become into the post-secondary funding. That allows 100% of those grant dollars to go towards capital equipment. Capital equipment is another one of those areas that we hit pretty hard as things were starting to decline in terms of enrollment. But the upshot to that is, I don't think we've really kicked the can down the road too far, we got a couple lifelines during that time, we got some go-add grant money over a few years of $1.1 million. So it allowed us to still buy equipment and still be aware of that, but we also know that we have to start ramping that back up. So if you were to look at that five-year capital equipment plan, you'll see that increase over the next several years and work its way back up into a million, million and a half type of expenditures as we look at our five-year projection out. As we, speaking of five-year projections, that's always hard for accountants to do, you know, the old adage is, using financial information to see where you're going is like driving with a car with the windshield back, blacking out, looking out the rearview mirrors. But it's trying to reflect the reality that we know today, and looking at some inflationary adjustments, looking at our capital plans, looking at our staffing needs as we go forward, the fund balance dips a little bit, I think in FY22 it drops down, but then it comes back up again in '23. When you look out at that, you see some revenues coming in less than projected expenditures, but you have to remember, we look at this year to year. Not standing here today to say in FY 20, 21, 22 that we're going to come in and plan, a planned use of reserves. I would anticipate, we'll try to balance that budget and bring it in line with where we're going with it. So, that's a very high level on the post-secondary fund, probably a little more in high level, it's about as detailed as what's in PowerPoint as well. Food service fund, I mentioned earlier that we're going to transfer in some operating funds, it's about $89,000 that we're seeking to keep that going. We've made some adjustments in our staffing there. Hopefully the survey instrument's going to give us a little bit of information and ways that we can better provide services and better utilize that, but it's still evolving. It's relatively new in our operation, so we'll continue to look at that. Childcare fund is, moves all the time. It's up and down, so we're projecting this year that we're going to need a little support to keep that going. We don't require students to sign a 40-hour contract or 30-hour contract, so we're really looking at our full-time employees or district staff that are utilizing that, that are the heavy lifters when it comes to that funding. But ratios are very much defined by the state as we go forward with that, so some transfers related to that. We look at our budget overall, and it kind of finished in that executive summary, this is really representative of what President Briggs talked about when he first came out, it's really about enrollment, enrollment, enrollment. And I think as we talk about our revenue streams in terms of tuition and fees and state revenue, it's all tied to those credits and those enrollments. So this budget really reflects that, it really reflects that enrollment management concept, investments in admissions and recruitment, investments in student success and retention, some changes that we're making in moving staff around as we look at institutional effectiveness, really related to Higher Learning Commission with some additional requirements that they're bringing forward with, asking of the post-secondary institutes to provide more accountability, but also trying to redirect and refocus some of Tracy Noldner's efforts in those area. And then the other piece is our community outreach, which has been ongoing and that you're aware of, through the different community events that we've had, and trying to create interest in our programs and in our programs through that methodology. So, questions? I'm out of breath because I just, I think I took one breath in one sentence.
What's our deadline for the Vet Tech program fundraising to match the state funding?
The grant talked about 12/31 of '18.
Of this year?
Yeah. So what was vague in it, and nobody's asked the question yet, does that mean commitment by then, expended by then, raised by then?
Raised, yeah. What is that?
And generally, my experience with those grants is they are usually pretty understanding and willing to modify to meet the needs. I think they understand and have committed to that investment. Let's just figure out the timing piece of it.
As long as we're working towards it.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions? Any questions?
We can go through the PowerPoint if you really want. I mean, I hit, I hit all of the highlights. I think this is the, this is the one that's the most important. When we look at this particular slide here, this really shows, the darker blue is the budget, the gray is what we actually experienced. And we've talked about that, five years of declining enrollment. So as we look at '17, FY '17, things started to line up. We're projecting some nice growth in FY '18, and obviously we're going to continue that into FY '19 as well. Like I said, I think my estimate's fairly conservative, but I would rather not overestimate our revenues, and we can make adjustments on the fly as we need to. Already talked about the tuition rates increasing from 235 to 240, $2 state imposed, $3 on a local level. Just a breakout in comparison of the tuition fees, state revenue, and some different explanations over there, which we've already talked about. Again, growth in credits roughly 7% over this is budget to budget. The rate increases of $2 and $3. State revenues, when we look at that 1% increase in PSA, a bigger piece of the pie of the $500,000 in go-add. Salary enhancement, the HB 1182 money's down a little bit. That was, the FY '18 budget was just a carryover. Couple of things that the state is changing, really relates to the Board of Regents and the Gen Ed agreement. They're saying you're already getting paid from the Board of Regents, we're not going to pay you again. So that, we drove that price, that component down a little bit, so the cost to the state's a little bit less, at least from that avenue of it. Federal revenue basically unchanged, and then the local revenue, again, that $500,000 local match for the Vet Tech.
I just want to talk about the $3 per credit fee increase. When we had our tech council meeting last week, we spent a lot of time discussing that, the appropriateness of it. And the recommendation from the tech council to the school board was the unanimous recommendation to, of course, the $2 per credit increase that the state Board of Tech Ed gave us, and then the $3 increase for this year. And we want the administration to watch very carefully what we're, what our numbers are looking like during this coming year, so that we don't have to go back and have that $3 per credit fee continue for another year. And the selling point for that is to redo that website, because that really is one of the blocks to students being able to access all of the programs that they're interested in, and we have to redo that. And we just don't have $150,000 or $180,000 sitting around that isn't being used. So to get the, to remove that barrier and to get that website redone, which is critical to continuing the increase in credits and students, that's the reason that that recommendation did come forward.
It should really show a return on investment with that. I think that's crucial.
Right. And I, there's a couple of things. There's, I mean, there's a history with the $5 per credit. When we go back, there's been some tuition buy-down money provided by the state at that $5 per credit level, and it's been every other year, two instances of when that's been provided. Wasn't, an additional $5 wasn't funded in the legislature this year, and that's happened in years past where the schools have gone out. And last time it was, we raised tuition $5. This time it was $2, and then they put it out to the local districts to decide what they wanted to do. So that's part of that history, and that doesn't mean that just because we've always done it, we need to continue doing that. It's really about fulfilling that need and addressing that. But I think the other thing that's important to recognize when we look at our tuition increases of the past, and when you go way back to even when I started here in 2004, we have finally got that down to what was always kind of a personal goal of mine was, can we operate in an inflationary type of environment? Not things that are outpacing, and I'm talking general inflation. There's different inflation indexes for post-secondary institutions, but overall, this $5 represents 2.1%. So that's, that in my mind is getting us in that inflationary mindset. And then I think you're right, it's an investment, it should have payoffs, and never want to say never, but I think there's a very real possibility that we'll be coming back with a different recommendation of not continuing with that and actually maybe being able to scale that back and picking up those additional dollars through our tuition and tuition growth, just a number of students, so. I think we talked about the different categories and the increases, again, in the wages, primarily the COLA and some increase in adjunct. A little bit of an increase in early retirement benefits, had a couple more people eligible this year, so that drives up our exposure. Benefits, again, the premium rate and the methodology and how that's calculated with turnover positions, purchase services, really related to those two major components when we look at the A and E and then the webpage redesign, travels up a little bit, 25 grand. There's some printing rental in there, that was with the change to the Marco thing. Again, these are kind of small fringe types of elements, but just wanted to make you aware. Before, we had accounted that all for in printing. Now in the new, with the new Marco thing where we are segmenting and separating the actual rental of the machine with the actual cost to do the images. Utilities up just a little bit. I think part of that's still trying to find our space in that new building and utilization of it, so that'll start to equalize over the next couple of years. Supplies predominantly in the classroom, going to have direct impact on the students and in the non-capitalized areas. Capital, we talked about equipment increase and then in the infrastructure increase as well. Dues and fees, the main increase there. When I say dues, fees, miscellaneous, that's the transfer to those other enterprise funds. Capital improvements, as I talked about briefly, and there's detail in your board packet that lays out the projects over the next five years. I think as we come back in next year, you'll see us setting aside some money out in the later years of this, and this was really related to Career Avenue, whether that was going to, City was going to abandon that Whirl section and put Curb and Gutter in there. Well, they just started an overlay project today, so I'm guessing they can push the Curb and Gutter out of the way as yet. But really, again, the major dollars of that is tied to that Vet Tech program. Capital equipment breaks it out by the different programs. Again, most of it is in the instructional areas. IT has a little bit to update some of their equipment, and the operational services folks are updating a piece of equipment as well, but the majority of it's going back into the programs. I spoke to the five-year projection. As I stated, the fund balance dips a little bit in '22. It's not concerning at this point. Typically, that five-year modeling always does it, always drops down in that fourth year, and then the fifth year comes back up. Again, I said, it reflects the realities that we know today, some inflationary adjustments in terms of our expenditure costs, some inflationary adjustments in terms of our tuition rates. But again, we look at this every year, and so when we look at that FY '20 projected, I don't anticipate we're coming back asking to use reserves of 654,000. We'll bring that in line, and I would expect our revenue will be higher in that particular year. Already talked about the enterprise funds, the subsidies to the two smaller ones, childcare and food service. We can get into more detail if you want, but that's a general high-level summary. I think this, from my perspective, this has probably been the easiest budget I've ever done to explain. It's fairly straightforward in areas where we're investing our resources. It's very delineated. When you look at the summary documents, you can see where the wages are increasing, you can see where the professional services are increasing, they're tied to very specific things. You can see them tied to very specific things in the capital, where years past, it's been all over the board in terms of ups and downs in individual cost centers, but it's very focused for FY '19.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? So we open up to the public hearing. We'll open it up for a public hearing for the FY '19 proposed budget and tentative adoption of the FY '19 proposed budget.
You in the back, sir.
We will close the public hearing. And forgive me, do we just acknowledge the public hearing, or do we remember?
No. I don't think we need a...
What was the question?
Do we need a motion to acknowledge that we had the public hearing?
Public hearing?
No.
Okay. Okay, so...
But we do need a motion to tentatively adopt.
Okay.
So... To tentatively adopt the FY '19 proposed STI budget as presented.
Second from Board Member Mickelson. All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, a motion passes.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich, for all the hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate your support, and I know this can get a little droning on and on and on, but trying to hit the highlights.
Now, you can take a little bit of a break, right?
Yeah, sure.
President Parker, board members, I want to thank Rich for his help and leadership. I know he commented about this is a very straightforward budget this year, but it has not been, from my perspective, again, this is only the second budget I've been involved with at Southeast. It was a difficult budget in the sense that we had over 4.5 million, I think, in proposed increases in funding. And I know a number of areas, IT, academics, student services, recruitment, enrollment, all of those areas worked very hard to bring those requests down to what is more reasonable in terms of, based on our revenue. But that was a difficult process. So we appreciate your support. We are very serious, I think, in making strategic moves, and I know we've discussed in past meetings within our administrative structure to hopefully help foster increased enrollment. And we're off to a very good start for the fall of 2018. So at our next meeting, we'll probably provide an update on enrollment for you at that point. But again, just want to thank Rich because it was, I think nights and weekends would be since January, and before that, it was nights and weekends on last year's budget. So it's been nonstop, and very much appreciate his guidance and leadership in helping us pull this together. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
We are adjourned. Thank you.